Black in school, our Mike is Dunnis, we're at the end of the schools and I appreciate you coming out tonight. And these are important events that we do annually around budget. I would say it's important that all folks in the community have an understanding of the school budget. Cause I think sometimes there's some misconceptions about funding, lack thereof, and usage of the funds that we do, we receive from state or federal government. So I think it's important that people come out, have an opportunity to ask questions, get some answers. Cause it is important to not only families who have children in Ridgeport Public Schools, taxpayers as well, the city of Ridgeport. So, thank you for coming. I'm gonna go through, there's quite a few slides, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on certain slides, but the ones that I know that are very important, and I will go through them and take some questions and answers. Maybe in between a little bit, because I don't want you to hold the question till the end and then the slide's not up and we have to go back. So, if there's anything relevant that you'd like to participate in during the time, just raise your hand and get the question asked. I'll do my best to answer the question. If I don't have the answer for you tonight, I'm not gonna just make it up. I'd like to get some time to go back, ask some questions, and get the correct answer. So, I can get your contact information and over the next couple of days I will get back. Even though school is not in session tomorrow, I will be at work. Monday, we're off for the federal holiday and we're also, I'll be back at work on Tuesday. So, I will be having an opportunity, I can email you and you can call back. So, obviously the Board of Ed puts together a budget request every year. This is the amount of money that we would be requesting from the state and from the city in order to operate next year's budget with how the spending cuts to our current funding, to our, excuse me, current staffing levels and programs that we currently own. So, we did ask originally for a 5.76% increase. That includes state and federal, I mean state and local money. We split that into 7 million requests from the city contribution and we're asking for 7.5 million originally from the state. So that averages to 2.78 for the city and 2.98 from the state. However, at the Board of Ed meeting dated, what, two weeks ago, Monday? A motion was passed by the Bridgeport Board of Education that would ask the state for a flat $50 million. So, the 7.5 million was increased to $50 million, which was a total increase from the state of 19.85%. And with the city contribution that was requested, that was a total increase of 25.6%. Now, obviously, that number is very lofty. That number is most likely not going to be granted by the state. So we're again hoping for 7.5 million from the state. Anything above and beyond that would be great. I would appreciate that. That would allow us to start putting back into our schools positions and programs that we've lost in the past. Any questions so far? Anyone unclear of what the request is? And why the request is what it is from the state, from the Board of Education?
If this is a matter of case, part of the question, ask additional education for 100 jobs per year?
Well, depending on if we receive the entire funding, based on what permanent salary benefits would be and a few other factors, this could bring back well, upwards of 100 jobs into this district. So, that could be kindergarten repairs for all our buildings again. That could bring back math coaches, that could bring back literacy coaches to support our instruction in the classroom. That would improve our SRPI program here in the district. That could bring back some semblance of what we would call home school coordinators or some semblance of that which would be able to provide outreach and apparent engagement in our schools. So, again, this question is a good question. There are other things that could be considered as well. Alternative programs for students that are just having a difficult time navigating to our large comprehensive high schools. We all know that every kid is not suited to go to a large comprehensive high school and that a smaller or personalized program could be beneficial, especially for the teenage kids.
So, I, um, when I, when I, it doesn't really, it's totally possible for us to do that?
Absolutely not. I mean, there are programs that are presented to me on a weekly basis that I know will bring value and bring additional supports to students in our district that need it. But they all cost money, they all go with the price tag. And there are things that I have seen that we have some semblance of, but we can enhance. That would provide additional support for students, especially at the middle and high school, where we know that students are very impressionable by their peers, students are getting experimental in their socialization and those are the students that we'd like to provide additional support for, keep them engaged in school and prevent them from going out into the streets and getting involved in some of the things that are going on in our city, which is causing violence and loss of life for necessary reasons. Awesome. So, go again. Part of our basis for our ask is based on enrollment. As you can see here, for this school year, we have 20,130 students. That was as of October 1st. So you can see it declined 134 students from the previous year. That being said, just look to the far bottom here. Under PLL, we had 3,614 students last year on October 1st. We have 4,031 students this year on October 1st. We currently have close to 4,300 as of yet. So our enrollment may have been down 134 students from last year. On October 1st, we have exceeded last year's total as of today. And we're getting more and more students every day. It is not from the impact of the earthquake in Puerto Rico that some may assume. We're just since Januar- uh, January 1st, getting influx of students in South America and from Mexico. So, those students come and they require services that we need to provide. So those are some of the stressors that I would say are affecting our budget currently. Any questions? For you. So, in our population, as you can see, almost 18% of our population are identified as special education. So we all know the special ed budget in the district is quite large. That includes in district students that we service and our out of district students that we need to provide an education. The out of district placements, as we've all heard over many, many years, is quite expensive. The transportation, the cost of the education of our children out of district. So what we're looking to do is to try to provide more enhanced services in districts so we don't have to send our students out. From what we've found over the years, these out of district placements are not better. They may have better facilities, they may have beautiful buildings with nice green front lawns and everything else. As we were just talking at our administrative meeting. They don't always have certified staff. They are not held accountable to our standards. They don't have the teaching staff and the knowledge that we do. And many times, we're finding this year, as we monitor some of our out of district placements, many times we're getting billed for students that aren't these students. So there's no trace. Yes. So, we've done a really good job this year of making sure we're not making facilities, large tuition payments for students that are not attending at the district. So we're requiring them to give us weekly and monthly attendance. Those that are not complying, we will withdraw and withhold payments. Again, try to put some layers of accountability to these facilities that normally just send out large bills and get everything. Questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I know, I look to the board of community where they're discussing about children that need some, to other schools out of districts, when they're sending them here. We're not paying for, um...
The magnet schools, you mean? Yeah, so... So, the inter district magnet schools were created. School districts that were receiving students could not, or were not allowed to charge any fees for those students. So, Fairchild Wheeler Discovery School opened. We were receiving the state funding, but we did not have any chance or opportunity to bill. Fast forward a couple of years, legislation changed and we were given the right to bill those sending districts the same way they could bill us as well for those students. So we did send out bills four years ago to all the surrounding towns that were sending students, the Discovery Magnet and Fairchild. Four districts opposed making those payments. We've been involved in litigation in those districts. We prevailed at every level so far, we have not received a payment as of yet. It has made it very difficult, I can tell you that, in trying to maintain recruitment efforts in those districts. Because obviously, when you send a bill out, it has a financial effect on those districts. So for example, you send a bill for, and I don't know the exact number, but there's well over 300 students from Stratford. That spread out over to high schools, Stratford, Iowa, Penel. Doesn't have a huge impact in their staffing in terms of reducing their staffing. High school schedules, as a former high school schedule, I can tell you, if you lose 150 students, you may lose one staff member. So the savings on the staff member does not come even close to what they're being billed by the sending district. We're sending out 3,000 dollars for a bill for you. So because of that, we've lost some enrollment on the Fairchild Wheeler campus from out of district, which causes our in district numbers to have to be reduced because we have to maintain duration. We're hoping to get a resolution and collect those funds and once those funds are collected, I think it's time to get to the table and try to renegotiate how we do business with sending towns. I'll give you my personal feeling, I don't think we should be billing them. The game was one way and in the middle of the game, the rules changed. It's having a negative effect on our school, it's having a negative effect on our funding. I think it'd be much more better coming to the table and coming to an agreement that suits both the sending district and us. That's just my personal feeling. You need me to walk into it?
Yeah, you and then...
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
My question is, and maybe you kind of touched on some of it, if my Fairchild, you know, Fairchild, when it's, you know, they have that plan for five years. But going forward, you know, we are going to be funding a school anywhere here, like 10,000 students at that side of that, which is really fortunate. So, the question is still there. You know, there's a lot of other soft issues, you know, with the, you know, you know, I think that $10,000, it's still $10,000, a lot of that, you see, that's way more, any of these now.
Okay, so, I think it's unfair to look at just the breakdown per pupil by building because I've done a couple of these kind of community type events. One was over at church on, over by Washington Park with faith events. Looking at the per pupil expenditure by building takes into many, takes many factors. So, the staffing level and the resources given to Fairchild Wheeler are no different. The formula that is calculated in Central, Harding, and Bassett. I think what causes the decrease in the per pupil expenditure is, number one, there's no bilingual ESL in the school. Number two, there's no special ed really in the school, there's no special ed programs. So Central has medically fragile. Correct, but the programs that would bring many more students that don't go to, don't live in that district, since there is no district there. Like I said, so Central High School has medically fragile. We have ASD classes at some of the other schools. We have the bilingual program at Harding High School. We have ESL programs at Central and Bassett. These are all drivers of increased cost per pupil. Veteran staff, there are much more veteran staff at the other schools as well. That causes higher per pupil. No, the department heads are just folks that they teach regular class loads. They may have other responsibilities in general, but they don't receive any monies for that. So that's a misconception that there's department heads. Oh, they're stressed. I mean, I don't know what you mean by help to run the schools. I mean, it is quite labor intensive when you have, when you take the overall look. I mean, I'm not gonna get into the debate of what, and there's no sports programs ever. So those are other drivers that cost, cost dollars at the other high schools.
But I mean, like last year when we were discussing how to get additional, the second, the principal, many people spoke about staffing, putting their pay per schools in, to students.
True.
And how it would affect the school. So, trusting Eric, if they're there, doing the job, and basically that and a couple of, you know, assistant clerical positions. And they, they're saying that they need to argue or at least what was originally there, which is, I believe, three assistant principals?
No, there was two assistants and three principals. So they're, they're one down, but they're also significantly...
Are they maybe put out?
No, I, I get it. Enrollment is down, which causes you to lose staffing. I mean... No, I understand. So we're just gonna move on from, I mean, this isn't about one school. Absolutely, there's a fiscal plan to run all the schools in the district. Yes, sir.
You mentioned the special ed budget. Special ed is 29% of the budget and 70% of the students. And you cannot cut anything from special ed. Every day, special ed is mandatory.
Correct. Federal law.
So you're using that 70% of the students, you use 70% of the rest, 70% of the rest of money from all the other students.
Correct.
Including Fairchild Wheeler, which has a low proportion of special education.
Correct. Samuel, to the next slide? Yes, sir. Ah, Mr. Trayburn?
Um, did you suggest that they have the mic when they're asking questions?
I'll try to repeat the question because I think, yeah, no, I'm just... So again, this kind of gives you an idea of what was just mentioned by a woman in the, from Fairchild Wheeler. This is the per pupil expenditure. With our DURG, some of our DURG districts like Hartford, New Haven, and Waterbury, we've also included Stanford in the mix. We are significantly per pupil underfunded, as you can see in our expenditures. Just to put a sideline to this, so you have a little added caveat to this. Hartford and New Haven are significantly higher. They also have higher administrative costs. They run about 30 to 40 between the two districts. More administrators in the district that are running the district. Obviously, those are folks that make a significant amount of money compared to some of the other services. So that also drives down their per pupil expenditure. So that number would be much higher if they reduced the number of administrators. Their per pupil expenditure would be higher. So they are spending a lot more money to run their district, run their buildings than we do, with the monies that they have. So, a lot of this that we're spending is directly in classrooms, on transportation, on student services. We are very thin when it comes to administrative costs. We have about 80 administrators that runs every district office and that runs every building in the district. So that's quite low, when you think about 38 schools. We do have fiscal goals, so obviously there is a fiscal plan. We want to maintain a structured, balanced budget, as all school districts do. We do have a school-based budgeting model. So there is a formula, there is a way that we calculate what the number of teachers are in each building based on the population of students. There are some adjustments that are made for high schools because obviously the structure and the schedule requires more staffing than you would at an elementary, middle school. Fiscal accountability, as everyone knows, we're very conscious of our spending. There's layers and layers of procedures in place to account for expenditures in the district. To most people's dismay, we are not running an inefficient district. I mean, anyone here from the staff will tell you, it is very difficult to spend $1 in this district without having a rationale and without having approval. So, very difficult. And we do have a comprehensive fiscal management plan, which has a bunch of safeguards that we've implemented to make sure that we stay on our path during the course of the school year. So, that being said, I'll go to the next slide. So again, we do have position allocation. This is an equitable and uniform staffing formula. Again, we take into consider school-based needs. So whether you have a special ed program, whether you have, you're servicing English language learners, whether you're a high school, a middle school, elementary school. There is an operating allocation. Every school continues to receive $20 per student and that is used at the school's discretion within the parameters of our spending procedures in order to service their buildings. And we do have some deployment of part-time employees depending on the needs in certain buildings. So for interventionists, for part-time support staff. Teacher's choice, each teacher in the district receives $30 based on the first payroll in October. Obviously, that's not a lot of money, we don't know that. I'm sure Mr. Trayburn and Mr. Popple can say that that money goes pretty quick. But we do try to give each teacher a little bit of funding so they can do some things in their classroom. And then from our Title I money, parent involvement, each school gets $7.20 per pupil this year for parent involvement, Title I funds. Mr. Spohman? Back up two slides for a moment. Yes, sir.
These numbers, 14,697 and 16,000, especially compared to what? Now, which, which district receives the most money from the state?
The district, the question is which district receives the most from the state? Hartford Public Schools does receive the most money from the district. We are number two from the state, yes, correct.
So, all these other districts, they make up this per pupil funding from their local tax dollars, correct?
The other districts, either from local tax dollars or in-kind services, correct?
And Bridgeport, Connecticut, it comes from local tax dollars, gives the least amount per pupil to the entire state of Connecticut, correct?
I can't answer if it gives the least amount per pupil, but I would guess we are close to the limit. So obviously, we have some challenges fiscally and these are some of the things that drive the budget and prevents us from achieving our goals. Number one, are you increasing utility costs? Running some of our buildings is quite expensive. I just looked in particular at one particular building the other day. For example, Johnson School, the last 12 months, cost about 271,000, a little bit more than that in utility costs for the course of a 12-month period. Utility costs are a driving force. We do have legal services that we need to be cognizant of. Transportation is a large part of our budget. As Mr. Sokolovik mentioned, special education results in about 29% of the budget. Absence coverage, when teachers are absent, we need to provide substitutes for those teachers. That is a large expense as well, when you have a staff as large as Bridgeport Public Schools. And then our benefit cost package is also increasing. We did go to the state partnership plan two years ago, but there is an increase year after year in all of it. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about transportation. How much do we spend on transportation with others?
The entire transportation budget, that I don't have for it. I think it's... Yeah, several million, though.
Right, but we don't have other cities compared to Bridgeport. What they're spending under transportation? Have we ever looked at outsourcing, blessing, if that's...
We do outsource blessing, we don't go in and...
Have we looked at what other cities that are prepared for the Bridgeport, okay, for losses, for contracts? It just seems we're spending so much money on transportation.
Well, I mean, we have a strong negotiator at the table when we negotiate our transportation costs with WeTransport and we have been very minimal in the increases that we've received from WeTransport. So, you know, I'm not really thinking that we're wasting money on transportation. We've extended our walking distances, as many districts have. Transportation costs in districts like New Canaan are quite high as well, just because they have simply a lot more miles of road to travel. You know, we have shorter distances when we have a lot more students, so...
Do you look at the city transportation, do you have Ubers? The cost of that is a lot less than what you're making from, or also the schools. I just think, with something that we can take some money for transportation...
Well, I mean, with something that I'm sure we can look at, I don't feel comfortable putting children in Ubers.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, well, either high schools are in favor of that, or the cost. I'm just saying, if you look at the cost of transportation for doing out, like, on a regular day, it's, you know, people can afford it, you're paying for education, it's your school. It's just crazy, you know, I'm just saying, is everybody supporting that?
I'm sure it's been exploring expenses, yes. Next. So this is the current 1920 operating budget. So we have 251.88 million dollars in our operating budget and then another 30.4 million in grants. As you can see, as a result of the declining enrollment in our magnet schools, we lost 553,622 dollars. Our priority money was increased by $22,123. We had an increase of 1.2 million in Title I funds. We did get an additional $1.3 million from the city. We did get it, not in our operating budget, but as a result of the transportation contribution at the last minute, we did receive another $1.4 million in transportation funding outside of the operating budget. And then we did get from our state ECS funding an additional $2,636,676. So as Mr. Sokolovik alluded to earlier, city share is 26.5 million of our budget. State share is 73.5% of our operating budget and then the rest is made up of federal and state grants. Priority, bilingual magnet, Title I, Title IIA, Title III bilingual, and IDE. Questions? Now Senator Murphy asked how he could go back to Washington and have an impact. And the only thing that he could have any real impact on... And the only thing that he could have any real impact on is special education. That is federally funded, it's federal law, IDEA. Obviously, he has no impact on what the state gives us or what the local city gives us, but that would be the one way that he can do something. I explained to him very carefully, if he funded special education fully, he wouldn't need another dime from the state, or additional dime from the state or the city, he would be whole. Unfortunately, that is not the case. I'm not sure where federal government is on increasing aid to local school districts, but right now, from my conversation with him, education makes up about three percent of the federal budget. So that is an extremely low number compared to what we spend on defense and many other things. But I don't see anything coming down the pike at this time. So right now, I think we're operating from a perspective that we're going to rely on the state and the city in the upcoming budget season, probably for many years to come, on funding our social system. We have put in requests for information, like I'm sure many other districts and entities throughout the state with the Dalio Foundation. We have not, no one's actually heard back yet for any more detail of their proposal. But I'm not, you know, looking forward to anything anytime soon. I think that still has its own issues, trying to resolve that money. But there is nothing specifically earmarked for Bridgeport. That is open to any district in the state of Connecticut that shows that they have a need and that has a plan that fits within the Dalio parameters, so you can go on their website, and it's very specific in trying to engage students that are not in it. Yes?
The ECS money that comes in from the students that go to charter schools in Bridgeport, where's that money at?
ECS funding that goes to charter schools?
That comes to the city, that's for the children, Bridgeport children that do go to the charter.
Well, we provide services as well to students at charter schools, so...
I talked to a couple of people on boards at charter schools, and they said they're not receiving any of the ECS money. They want strictly on donations, so just to clarify that.
I'm not going to speculate on what people on the boards at charter, but I know we provide services to students at charter schools, special education and transportation services. So it does cost us money to service the charter schools.
So all the ECS money that goes to charter schools?
I don't, they don't go specifically to the charter schools. They go into our operating budget.
They don't follow the student, no? No, they don't follow student, I think they're totally operating.
And then we supply the services that we're asked to supply for those.
So do you think that most of the ECS money goes towards special needs, special services, versus just the education for all Bridgeport students?
I'm not...
The board that goes towards...
I'm not following the question.
The ECS money...
It's part of the operating budget.
Right. And you just said you use it for special services at the charter schools.
No, we provide services to the charter schools. So I don't know, you know, the charter schools, obviously, are a whole other entity that I'm not equipped to get into, because I'm not that familiar with how they spend their dollars as well. Yes, sir?
I have a question. The one-time expenditure from last year with the city included, was that the one-point-three-million?
No, that was not included.
How much was that?
It was one-point-two-million dollars, the one-time expenditure for the bus company, plus the two-hundred-thousand discount that the bus company gave the city. It was in total one-point-four in real dollars. So this year, if they were to maintain that, they would either have to give us one-point-four-million, because that's what the bus company will bill us, or they would have to cut another deal directly with the bus company. This was the budget gap plan for this past year. This was a number of tactics that were taken and measures that were taken to close from our end, a little over six-million dollars. As you can see, those clerical staff lost, district administrators, district per diem services, two pre-K classes, and one extension of the PDG grant. We're trying to maintain our level of spending with special education. We did some redeployment of special education, created some new classrooms that hopefully will keep kids in district. Custodial services, we didn't fill a couple of vacancies until recently, so that led us to some savings. There's the one assistant principal at Fairchild, we have her. Two security guard vacancies that are being filled right now by substitute guards, and a list of other items there that saved some money into two thousand nineteen-twenty budget. This obviously is the story in a nutshell. So over the last several years here, this is a four-year diary of the positions that have been lost from the district that Mr. Sokolovik alluded to earlier. In sixteen-seventeen, we lost a hundred-and-thirty positions. That includes university interns, so those are not employees of the district, yet they did provide a service within our school district. Number one, in substitute teaching, number two, in a training ground for future teachers here in the district. Seventeen-eighteen, we lost another sixty positions. Two thousand eighteen-nineteen, forty-one, and then nineteen-twenty-twelve. So two-hundred-and-forty-three positions all told. As you can see with the declining number, it just shows that there's very little room, if any, to make any additional cuts this year. So if we are asked to do that, it's going to have dire, dire consequences here in the That's a good question. I don't see us cutting anything that relates to instruction in our classrooms or running our school buildings.
I'm quite in the know. In the state law, that we have to provide services to students in charter schools? The parents' children's under cover, so they shouldn't have services?
So the question is, is it state law that we have to provide services to students in charter schools? Yes, sir. So students that live within the boundaries of the city have a right to receive services? So this is the budget gap history from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year twenty. Revenue change in sixteen was one-point-one-million. The actual budget gap was sixteen-million dollars. Revenue change was two-point-eight-six-million in seventeen-eighteen, which was a result of eleven-point-two-five-million-dollar actual budget gap. And as you can see, over the four-year total, we have lost forty-four-million, forty-four-point-one-one-million dollars in funding. And that results in all the cuts that you saw on the slide before. So this is the telling story here, and this is the story that I've tried to preach to our local delegation at the state and also our local government, is that over the past five years, we've received a total of one percent of an increase in our total budget and funding, one percent. So obviously, just when you talk about utility costs within your own household, you see a more than one percent increase just in how you run your day-to-day operations in your home. So can you imagine, in a school district of this size, to receive only one percent increase in total funding? That is the reason why you see so much lost resources to our students. So that brings down, as you can see, city contribution in most years is less than one percent, and in the state contribution, we see a similar trend. So we have, over the same five-year period, city contribution has been an average of less than one-half percent, and state average is little over one-half percent. That is the story that says it all right there. So when you hear, over the last several months, I'm sure a lot of you have heard this idea of audits and forensic audits, I can see if there was an increase over the last several years of five to ten percent in funding. And where's the money going when you're cutting positions but receiving extra funding? But when you're receiving that little bit of money and you lost that amount of staff, I can't see how anyone would question if we're spending the money in a respectable and So special education students is obviously one that, as we talked about earlier, puts a strain on our budget. This just gives you an idea. Out of the twenty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-four students on October first, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-seven of those students qualify for special education, student services. That's sixteen-point-four-two percent of our students. That's in two thousand and eighteen. As you can see, this past October, the increase went from sixteen-point-four-two to seventeen-point-four-nine, which was a change of one-hundred-and-seventy-three students. These are students that require, in many cases, services that have a high dollar figure to them. So as you can see, that our funding for special education, our reimbursement has changed very little, yet the number of students that receive services has increased significantly. And that number doesn't seem to be going trending in the lower direction, it seems to be trending up as the year has progressed. But we're trying to maintain the services that we can provide our students here in the district rather than send them somewhere else, where we're not sure how those services are being implemented. Any questions on the special education base? So this is the slide that really doesn't tell the full extent of the story. As I said, on the first of October, we had four-thousand-and-thirty-one students, which was almost four-hundred more students than a year prior. That number has grown almost by another four-hundred since October first. So that fourteen, four-hundred-and-seventeen student increase is more like seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred students over the last one year and six months. So that's a significant amount of students that are entering the district that require bilingual ESL services. That dollar figure has decreased from the state by fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. It was a slight increase by the feds, but an overall net loss in dollar figure of almost ten thousand dollars. All-out service costs are going up, and required services costs are going up.
So clearly, these numbers are reported as state increase?
Well, the state numbers are reported as of October first. There was an email that was sent by the State Department a couple of weeks ago asking what the impact for Bridgeport was because of the earthquake, earthquake, excuse me, in Puerto Rico. I did, however, add the other students as well, so they have an understanding of what impact we're having inside of the earthquake, because regardless, we are still receiving students that require the same services. So the State Department is well aware of our issue.
That is one of the things we talk about on our campus, is students that are just continually to progress in school without knowing how to speak English, so they're just big cats. And then they get to the high school level, and they don't speak English, they don't know the math, so it's a problem. And I'm just saying, this is really a problem, what is it, going through a system without being educated?
Well, I think we do a pretty good job in terms of our ESL bilingual services here in the district. I know compared to statewide numbers, we exceed in terms of lost link scores, which measures their English proficiency each year, and we exceed in other areas as well. So we are outperforming the state in our services that we provide here. We do a really good job here in Bridgeport. So this gives you the percentage breakdown again. City percentage is low, as was mentioned earlier. Twenty-six-point-five percent of our budget comes from city revenue. The other remaining parts of our operating budget is the state share at seventy-three-point-five percent. So as you can see, it's kind of hard to go back to the state and ask for fifty-million dollars, but it is very reasonable that the city portion needs to increase, and it needs to increase significantly over the next several years. So these are some of our cost control management. Our transportation contract really didn't increase much over the course of the last year. The bus company has also included some free trips, so our field trips are not costing us. We get ten per month, which equals a hundred per year. We've gotten some savings through our copier-print services. R. Kelly Services staffing for substitute teachers has maintained a certain level of predictability. However, the number of subs that we're using is really causing some stressors. We're trying to talk to the BEA to look at some options to try to resolve some of those stressors when it comes to subbing and the use of sick time and our energy costs. We have an energy conservation campaign that we're hoping will result in some savings as well. Twenty-twenty operating budget request. So if given all the money requested, sixty-four-point-five-million dollars is the total request, state and citywide, our operating budget would increase to three-hundred-and-sixteen-point-four-million, where we're expecting stability across our federal and state grants. Here are some of the things that are driving up the original request of five-point-seven-six-percent of collective bargaining. We just negotiated, and the teachers' union received an arbitration award, which has increases over the next four years. We're in the process of finalizing contract with APSME. Our nurses are in the final stages of contract negotiations, which we're looking at two-percent increase. Same with Launa. MAGE received their two percent about two months ago, and there's also an increased, projected increase, we're being told, of up to ten percent for our state Connecticut partnership plan. The MRF, which is the retirement contribution for our non-certified staff, is estimated to go up by a little over two percent. There is a grant that is expiring with the police department that would require us to pay half of the SRO cost that we currently have. That's something that is part of a four-year grant that was received, so we are in year four. That increase would be to our budget, four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand. You know, there's always the discretionary account that we put to calculate for any special ed increases over the next coming budget. Transportation, we're only expecting a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar transportation increase from the portion that we've negotiated, but if you factor in the budget of one-point-four-million that was put in play by the city this past year, that's factored in here. So that money, if we do not receive it, that transportation goes away for the students that were able to receive it this year. We'd like to put back the two-million dollars into the Internal Service Fund that we applied for the cost of nineteen-twenty year. We're factoring in about two-point-four-million dollars to fill all our vacancies, that include certified and uncertified staff, which is pure professionals and teachers that we're having a hard time in shortage areas filling right now, that we're covering with substitutes. And we have some curriculum renewal that's coming due, and there's always the potential for a shortfall, so we've built in a small reserve, a little over three-hundred-thousand dollars. There will be some savings. We estimate around one-point-five-million in staff turnover, so retirements and hiring that much. so retirements and hiring at a much lower rate for newer teachers. And that constitutes the initial ask of the $14.5 million or a 5.76% increase. So again, we're asking the city for $7 million. That's the number I've been holding true to. However, they want to calculate a $7 million increase in our budget. I'm not picky, so if they want to pick up taking on things like possibly paying for nursing services or like they've done in the past, or if they'd like to take on paying for school security, which makes up a little over $5.5 million of our budget, that's fine as well. But if we don't get the $7 million from the city, which is only 2.78%, which if you spread that out over the last five years where we've got less than a half a percentage, we're not asking for much. I think in total, that would still not equal out to a full percentage between over five years.
Yes, sir. Is the $430,000 for the SROs in there?
That is included in that $7 million. That would probably be the first cut if we do not reach $7 million. My position, as I stated to the mayor, to the delegation the other day when we had a meeting regarding Bridgeport and the state and the city, is that it should not be our responsibility to pay for police officers. I don't believe we should be paying for security guards. I think those are public safety concerns. I don't think we should be paying for nurses. I think that's a public health responsibility. But obviously, these are things that predate my tenure. But these are things that I think if we can transfer out of our budget without losing funding, would obviously equate to the same as if we received the money to pay for them. This breaks it down very simply. We're asking for 2.78% from the city again, 2.98% from the state. We're estimating we're going to receive in the state by alliance, ECS, probably $3 million right now. I've been trying to get some sort of conversation and dialogue going with the governor. But that's, I've been very, he's been very resistant in his office. So we're trying some other avenues to try to get him to the table. As we all know, Bridgeport was a big supporter in getting governor into office. So I think it's time that he comes back and repays his debt to the people here in Bridgeport. Again, this 5.76% is not a big ask when you spread that over the last five years. I think it's important that we continue to look at what we've been given over the last five years or not given and factor that in. Had we been given reasonable funding over the last five years, I could see a 5.76% ask as being unreasonable. As I talk to colleagues in the Fairfield County area, most superintendents are asking that 2.5% to 3.5% range. But these are folks that get 2.5% to 3.5% year after year after year. I think Ms. Lambek here wrote an article regarding the strat for post-budget where there's added services like guidance counselors and other things, a director of guidance in that budget plan. We're not adding anything. We're just trying to maintain the very little that we have right now for our kids. So what does the operating budget fund? So some folks want to, so it funds all our teachers, our principals, our assistant principals, our clerics, special education, special education services, our guidance counselors. We have athletic programs. We have nurses. Like I said, we have over $5.5 million in salary and benefits for school security. We have transportation. We have legal services. That's the $20 per pupil that goes to the schools. Curriculum, we have summer programs that we need to provide. Special ed extended school year. We have high street credit recovery. Even though there's a nominal fee for parents, it does not begin to cover the cost. It is not cost neutral. We have the district office. When we see the district office, that includes all full-time employees, whether it's in payroll or benefits, whether it's in youth resources, whether it's in the grants or purchasing department. That's pretty small when you consider the size of the operation. So this is our district employee count. As you can see, compared to our neighboring districts, these are the enrollment of those districts. Those are the number of employees at the district level. So when you saw earlier, Waterbury has significantly less students than we do, yet at the same time, they have more people working to run the school district. As you can see, in Hartford and New Haven, they have significant, those are just central office positions. They have quite a bit more other folks in the building level. Well, I would say they offer extensive outreach. We do not offer anywhere near extensive outreach. They're actually doing more, because they, like I said, if you look at Hartford between local and state funding, it's $50 million more. Now, it's hard to calculate exactly how much more in terms of New Haven because their local contribution is low. But I think because a lot of their services are paid for directly by the city. So I think that is deceiving. We don't, and can't figure out what those services are. But it may be nurses. It could be other in-kind services. But overall, we know that they're operating, obviously because of their per pupil expenditure, they're operating with more resources than we. But we are definitely not offering anywhere near the extensive services that they... And less from them. The city of Hartford puts $20 million more than the city of Bridgeport. You'd have to ask the administration in Hartford and the administration in Bridgeport, why would one give $20 million and the other one not give it? I mean, obviously, there are some factors that play into this. If you've gone to Hartford and you see a big insurance industry there, you come to Bridgeport, you don't see very much in terms of large buildings filled with people working except people's banks. So that is a contributing fact. I agree. I'm asking, we've been asking year after year after year. I can't give you the reason why, but at some point, we're either going to get something or something's going to change. There's no form letter, no. I mean, if you can have, every parent in this district can send a letter to the mayor. They can send it to the governor. You're asking questions that I don't have any answers to. I know he has committed, as recent as a few weeks ago, additional $2 million right off the bat. He has committed that, but that is not near the set, and I've told him that. So yesterday, we had some conversations with some of his folks. They have a clear understanding of some of the things that could work. But again, that's still, not only is the mayor, that has to go through the city council. So there's 21 people that are deciding the fate of the funds here in Bridgeport. Not just the mayor. Yeah, I can't speak to last year, but I can tell you... We're hoping that, you know, things are different this year, that, you know, the folks on the city council really need to be the ones driving this because if they decide that they're going to fund education and not fund other departments, then it doesn't really matter what the mayor or the governor does. So this is really a driving force of the city council and the priorities that they set. As you can see, this is, it's hard to understand it because of the color and the lighting in here. But running the school district salary and benefits takes up a large chunk of the budget. You know, it's obvious. And it's not just here, it's everywhere across the state. It's not as if we are unusual. I would have to say that it could be much higher. Mr. Traver would concur that our teachers, compared to our neighboring towns, are underpaid. But unfortunately, we don't have the resources to do that. And that's why we lose a lot of staff to places like Norwalk and Stanford and those towns because they're able to provide them with dollars that we can't provide. It's stressful. The working environment is also, you know, much, much more conducive to teaching when you have less kids in the classroom. So this is some of our curriculums, things that were mentioned earlier. You know, it's expensive to provide resources that are current and that have impact in the classroom. So these are some of the things that we have in place with literacy, math, and science and some of the dollar figures that go along with it. And these numbers are pretty conservative when you look at some of the budgets of those other districts that you mentioned, Hartford, New Haven, Waterbury, Stanford. Yes, those have been paid in full. So we still have outstanding bills with the other two over the next couple of years. So to kind of summarize everything, the total request again is $64.5 million. We want seven from the city, seven and a half, year fifty-seven and a half from the state. Some of the things that are really driving this is the special ed, the ELL, and our lack of funding over the last five years. We rank 157 out of 166 school districts when it comes to our per pupil spending. So we are not at the bottom, but we are not far from the bottom. And this is not a distinction that I would like to be part of any further. So obviously, we want to make sure that student achievement improves in the district. That's our goal, day in, day out here. All our staff is focused on bringing out growth in all our kids, whether they're a special education student or a high achiever. We want strong curriculum and instruction in our classrooms. We want to engage parents in our community. And we're trying, as I mentioned, to recruit and retain teachers of high quality for our kids to stay discerning. Any questions in closing? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And as you know, School Voluntary Association is looking to restore two positions that were left in the budget two years ago. Total cost of the last year is $7.5 million. I'm hoping that's going to happen in whatever you can do to consolidate this. My question is, and that is, I appreciate the fact that you and the board are asking for a 40 million to $50 million to increase funding for the district. In my opinion, it's not going to happen just because we don't. Campaign of some sort, a strategic plan. Last year, money came for additional busing because there was an uptwist. It didn't happen because somebody asked, but because the parent population in this district said absolutely not, would not make our kids walk further than they already walked. And that resulted in this $24 million, $1.2 million from the city, $200,000 from concession from this. My question is, is there a strategic plan to make? Including parent population, school population within the buildings, school on the tour association, all those people who are ready, willing, and capable to activate for these requests? It is not going to happen, nor would the city, because it's not going to provide five cents without serious pressing request.
I think that the plan is, right now, to be a little bit patient, even though that doesn't sound like what people want to hear. But what we've done in the past hasn't worked, as you mentioned. Going to the city council on the evening that they're going to talk, the committee is there. You know, we put signs up and people get up in speed and demand money, doesn't work. But I do think that once the time comes and we get a little bit closer, I think we're at the beginning stages right now in conversation. Yesterday was the first conversation that myself and our CFO had with the CFO and the OPM of the city to kind of lay down what we expect, what we're looking for. From past experience, I don't think that they were unreceptive. I think the conversation went very well. There was no no's or absolutely nots or some of the things that from our CFO have been said in the past. So I think they're listening. I think it's important, and you know, there's some behind the scenes things happening with some city council members on my part, to try to garner some support as well. But I don't, I don't think embarrassing the city side at this point is going to be productive. I do think that if we get to the, you know, ninth and 10th hour and it looks like we're not even close, they need to understand what services at that time could be eliminated and what effect that will have. I don't think cutting administrative positions at the schools or losing a few teachers has any impact. I really don't. Because I don't think they understand how that operates. But I do think if they see that the things that would go away have significant importance to parents and parents would be upset, like you said, and get in an uproar, that that will be able to have more leverage. I'm not prepared to start throwing out the ideas that I have, that I would put on the table because it's, it's not going to be productive for anybody at this time in February. We have a long school year to still get through. Culture and climate, I think Mr. Traver and Mr. Poco will say, is starting to build a little momentum in the district. So to start saying who may lose a job or who may be unemployed at this stage is probably premature and unnecessary for them and their families. So but I think it has to be high impact, like you said. Things that do not affect instruction in the classroom. Because those are the things that really go unnoticed by politicians and people of city and state government. They don't understand that. They look at the bottom line. They look at the bottom line. So things that will not affect our students in the classroom, but will have effect, the pressures put on city council and the mayor and the governor are things that would definitely be on the table first. No, I mean, we have that data, but to show the ranks... Yeah, well, I mean, the test scores are put out every year. It's no secret that we could be doing better in terms of how we score on S-Back, how we score on the S-A-N-T, our four-year graduation rates. But as I made very clear to our folks the other day, is that this violence that you see on the streets here in Bridgeport with our young people are a result of the funds that have been cut over the last several years. This is the residual damage, the loss of life of young people, because we cannot keep them engaged in our schools. We do not have the manpower or the programs that they need in order to be engaged and not be out on the streets. And until we restore that funding, this is gonna be continually happening until somebody wakes up and says, hey, enough is enough. You know, the other part of this too is there is a state component to this. You see the number of dollars provided by the state, but in terms of special education, that eats up a large percentage of the budget. That is gonna... That's a problem that's faced throughout the entire state. Maybe not in the sheer numbers, but in percentages, it's no different in Greenwich than it is up in Southington, New Haven, Hartford. Special education is a major concern. We need to start investing in our kids so we don't get to the point of those exorbitant costs. The state of Connecticut has one of the largest rainy day funds out of any state in the U.K. There's almost three billion dollars in reserve. That's a fact. So when we're asking for more money from the state, I know it's a large percentage of our budget now, that doesn't necessarily mean they don't have the money to give to us. Because three point... Two point eight billion dollars in reserve, a little bit of that money could fund a downturn in Bridgeport. We're losing, right now, projected about five hundred thousand dollars in alliance money next year. We shouldn't lose a penny. You know, we do have some support in the office of the Commissioner of Education, but I'm not sure how much impact he will have initially. But I know he is a supporter of Bridgeport and of the kids here at Bridgeport. So that's a good start. Because I don't think we've had that in that seat in a long, long time. Right, so it's not really an increase when you're taking from one pop and increasing the other pop. One lump sum, which doesn't do us any good if there's no net gain. I just have a minute. I just wanna bring one thing back up. And this is where my point is... Was trying to be made when I said about having big impact if there is a need to cut anything from our budget. Okay, so, right, one more, back forward. So in two thousand sixteen-seventy, when we cut forty-seven kindergarten pairs, it didn't have any impact. So obviously, having an extra adult inside the classroom, with students in school for the first time, didn't have an impact. Losing our homeschool coordinators, the folks that do outreach to parents, and a number of other opportunities that we don't do anymore, such as home visits for those kids that may not be coming to school, those families that are struggling, didn't have any impact. We lost six of our math coaches at that time. Those that are in our schools supporting the instruction of math, as we know, who struggle at math, as you said, test schools, had no impact. We lost five guidance councils. Those are five individuals that support students academically and socially in our schools, had zero impact. All right, so we cut the school resource officers that worked for us, but now we have the fleet of them from the ground, so that one's not important. University interns, unfortunately, I don't think they saw correlation between what that would do in our buildings and our recruitment and retention of students, of teachers. But again, then you go over to seventeen-eighteen. Eighteen literacy coaches, gone. Dr. Jenkins is here, obviously, she can tell you better than anybody. These are the folks that are on the ground, supporting not only instruction in the classroom directly, but also indirectly by providing professional development and support for new and struggling teachers. Again, didn't have any impact. We cut our alternative program that provided an education to students that probably now are no longer in our high schools. They have probably dropped out, because they needed a small setting with more individualized instructional planning, and we don't no longer have that. Didn't have any impact. We cut our nurses, three nurses, no impact. We cut four administrators. We cut four last year, I mean, two years ago, we cut another three. So eleven administrators, who again, because people see the number of dollars they make per year, figure, ah, what's the big deal? Well, as you mentioned, it has a big deal effect when you lose an assistant principal in a building. Those are people that not only are there to supervise students, they go into classrooms, they observe teachers, they work with teachers to try to make sure that teachers are providing high-quality instruction. No impact. Two thousand eighteen-nineteen, we finally killed off the remaining number of math and literacy coaches, because again, no impact. So when we add all this up, it had no impact. So I think the next thing that needs to happen is if we don't get the funding we need, is to finally get people's attention with some impact. So again, I'm not gonna give those ideas that I have in my head right off the bat that will have big impact. But part of that, again, is not to, for any other reason than to start anxiety from those folks that are currently working in the district, but we need to have a big impact. If not, we're gonna be in the same boat we've been in for the last four years or another four years. And unfortunately, I can't operate that. Yeah, those are done by the school-based health clinics. We don't... The nurses don't do flu shots or anything else. Yeah, I think the parents' component is big, because a lot of us who have gone out in the years past in front of the city council, the knock has been, the majority of folks that show up are employees. So of course, they don't wanna see jobs lost, because that affects themselves. So I think it's time where it needs to be parents' own. And the room should be filled, because if all the employees lost, left the room, the city council chambers those years, there wasn't that many parents, not enough to have impact. Yeah, well, there are people there, but not enough. I mean, it has to be big. I know the mayor is... Has one thing in the back of his mind. He made some promises a few months ago, faith apps held accountable. He mentioned that, that he has something to live up to. So hopefully, he can work the city council and everybody involved understands that. You need to invest now to prevent the woes of the future. Again, I said it very clearly to our delegation that we are experiencing all the outcomes of what we've lacked in funding for education. Now, they could argue differently, but unfortunately, these are young people involved. We're not talking about thirty and forty-year-olds that are on the streets shooting at each other. These are eighteen, nineteen, twenty-year-olds. So these are the effects of not having alternative programs, not having people in our schools to check in and check out on a daily basis with kids that are at high risk. Parents are working two and three jobs. Someone has to be there to help fill the void. And we had those people at one time. Thank you. I wanna just thank everybody for coming. I think it's important that you tell your friends and your relatives, because we do have another one next week at Cesar Batallo. I will extend the invitation again to our city council and mayor to see if anyone else would like to come out and maybe here and answer some of the questions that you have, you know. When they come as an individual, we've seen at similar type events, they'll deflect a little bit, or they'll try to deflect away from themselves. But overall, I think some of the folks in key positions or leadership positions at the city government level do wanna fund education. They do believe that taking from other departments and giving to education is worthwhile. So I think we, right now, we stay positive. We try to cooperate and work together. Because I think the other way just really isolates us and alienates us from getting any... Thank you. Oh, yes, Rob. This will be... We will make this available after tonight on the district website, yes. Yes, so you can print it out, take a view, do whatever you'd like to do this. Thank you.